I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to our Thursday morning meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. My name is Andy Hunt-Housen. To my left, Commissioner Tom Rolfe. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
To Tom's left is Brandy Spangler, who will be taking care of us today. And to her left is Greg McNally, who's Director of Community Planning and Development. To my right, Commissioner Candace Payne.
Good morning.
To her right, Keegan Shea, Deputy County Attorney, and Frank Cornwell, our CFO and sitting in for Mr. Walts today. Thank you very much. There is a sign-in sheet in the front as well as agendas, so please sign in prior to leaving today, so we have a good record of who's attended our public meeting. And we will start with our consent action items. Mr. Cornwell, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Today, we request approval of vendor claims report for a week ending August sixteenth, June, or sixteen, two thousand and twenty-four. And Marty Bentley is here for any questions, if you have any.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions, Commissioners? Any questions about the vendor claim? Okay. How about public comment on the consent action item? Public comment. Any public comment? Hearing none. Is there a motion on consent, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent action items as presented by Frank Cornwell.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved and seconded to approve Consent Action Item Two A as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay. We have a special presentation today with the Rocky Mountain Development Council, two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five work plan. Welcome our friends from Rocky Mountain Development Council. Good morning. If you'd introduce yourselves for the record and all of that, and we're all ears. Is the green light on? There you go.
Good morning. That sounds way different. I'm Lori Lattice, spelled L-A-D-A-S, and I'm the Executive Director of Rocky Mountain Development Council.
I'm Kathy Marks. The last name is M-A-R-K-S, and I'm Operations Director at Rocky.
Commissioners, thank you very much for having us today. We are here, as your agenda states, to present our CSBG work plan for two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. And we're a little delinquent in getting that done. We should have done this way earlier in the year, and we just didn't get it done. And we got reminded by our state grantor. So thank you for getting us on your schedule and letting us do this today. I'll just give you a brief overview of what Rocky does. I believe you're all very familiar, but just to run through our main programs, our senior nutrition program in Lewis and Clark County serves meals on wheels and congregate dining. And I've got a number here for fiscal year twenty-four, which just ended in June of two thousand and twenty-four. In Lewis and Clark County, for that fiscal year, we served fourteen thousand four hundred and sixty-nine meals in the congregate dining setting, and seventy-three thousand three hundred and twelve meals on wheels were delivered. Thought you might be interested in knowing that for the county. Some of our other main programs are Energy Services Program, which includes energy assistance, payments for people for help with their utility bills, and weatherization, and also energy share. Our Agency on Aging is the conduit for the Older Americans Act funds that we use for the meals programs, as well as they provide information and assistance to seniors in the tri-county area. Rocky Mountain Preschool Center is a preschool for children zero to five, and we run that over in the Neighborhood Center. And we also run Head Start, and we have sites all over Lewis, here in Helena, and all over the rest of our service area. And our Affordable Housing Program has currently three hundred and eighty-two units in Lewis and Clark, Broadwater, and Jefferson Counties. And finally, we run senior volunteer programs, including retired senior volunteers, foster grandparents, and senior companions. So I'm going to turn it over to Kathy. She is our CSBG Program Director, and she's going to walk through the work plan that we're asking for you to approve or sign off. Thank you.
Good morning. As Lori talked about, Rocky is a Human Resource Development Council, and as such, we're one of a thousand in the United States. And we all abide by the same kind of rules, which are called National Performance Indicators. And there are three main goals. The first is individuals and families with low incomes are stable and achieve economic security. The second goal is communities where public with low incomes live are healthy and offer economic opportunity. And the third is people with low incomes are engaged and active in building opportunities in their communities. And with that, the services and strategies that the HRDCs do around the country are employment, education, and cognitive development, income infrastructure and asset building, health, social behavioral development, and civic engagement, sorry, civic engagement and community involvement. Rocky offers all of those services, except for the employment piece, which Rocky did do for a while, but years ago it was turned over to CTI, Career Training Institute. But with the others, now I have this big, long document, and I promise I'm not going to go over it word for word, but what it encompasses is every program of Rocky and everything we do, not just those programs that are funded by the Community Service Block Grant, but everything we do. And so the first couple of pages are education and cognitive development. And those programs that fall under this category or domain are our Head Start, our Rocky Mountain Preschool Center, and also our foster grandparents who go into classrooms to help mentor students. If you go back a couple, then there's income and asset building. And with that, we have our homebuyer education program that is conducted once a month for people looking to purchase a home and finding out all the intricacies of what needs to happen for that. And then also, they now have a foreclosure prevention counseling program. And so those are the programs that fall under income and asset building. The next big one is housing. And of course, all of our affordable housing fits under that category, but we also manage two grants, the Emergency Solutions Grant and the Housing Stability Grant. And Rocky actually passes those grants through to Good Samaritan Ministries, but those grants fall under housing, as well as all of our energy services, where we provide LIHEP, Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, energy share, and then weatherization of homes. A couple more pages, and please feel free to read through this at your leisure. One is Health and Social Behavioral Development Domain, and a number of our programs fall in that. All of our AmeriCorps senior programs do because we provide, wow, come on, Lori, help me out. Physicals, good Lord, for all of the volunteers in those programs. We also provide healthcare for kids in our Head Start programs. And then all of our food and nutrition programs fall under that one, as well as a lot of our Rocky Agency on Aging, the things they do other than provide the funding. They do a lot of advocacy and resource help for seniors. So that falls under that category. And then back a few more, there's civic engagement and community involvement. And that's a lot of the training we provide, not only to Head Start parents, but to all of our volunteer programs. And it also includes our board, any board training that we have. And then the last one is just outcomes across multiple domains. As you can imagine, we have a lot of outcomes for people where they receive more than one of our services, as in Head Start families often receive the LIHEP help there, too. And the same thing with seniors. Seniors might be getting some energy assistance. So that is, in a nutshell, what this report is about, even though it's kind of long. But we're always happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much to both of you. Just to comment, first of all, you mentioned board training, and some of your board members are untrainable, I know. But yeah, that's me.
Yeah, yeah.
But you do great work, and it is amazing. I'm glad you're here today, and not as much, well, for us, of course, but it's the public that may be watching, because Rocky has their fingers in so many different things in the community, and so many different services, so many different opportunities for folks to get engaged in whatever their needs might be. And if Rocky doesn't provide it, they have a partner that they can turn to to help refer someone. You didn't talk much about another program that is housed in Rocky, which is Head Start, and it's not part of this, but you can make sure you mention that. And then, in addition to that, what was I, I just had a thought a minute ago, and I'll ask if there's any other questions first by Commissioners. Please.
Morning. Of course, I always ask questions. I don't want you to think that we're not listening. First of all, you mentioned your service area. Could you describe your service area, please?
Sure. Our service area is Lewis and Clark, Broadwater, and Jefferson County.
The entire counties?
Right, yes.
Okay. And what is the source of the funding? Where does it come from?
The Community Services Block Grant is federal funds that come through the state DPHHS IHSB Division. That's the Intergovernmental Human Services Bureau.
Okay.
It's under the Human and Community Services Division. There's a lot of acronyms in this work.
Certainly.
Under DPHHS at the state.
Okay, so it comes from the taxpayers who provide the funding to the federal government through their federal taxes, and thence to the state.
It's a block grant, yes.
Yes, and then to locals. So it's sort of just following the yellow brick road.
And it's allocated based on the number of low-income population in the counties. And the block grant itself, through the state of Montana, is allocated across the ten HRDCs. We all have service areas that are basically made up of counties. Some of us are very large, like in eastern Montana, I believe that one has got seventeen counties. And then three, I think, that we have, and some of the others are, three is about the smallest. So it's allocated based on, like I said, the number of low-income people in that service area, and that comes from the census data.
Okay.
So it doesn't get updated really often.
Thank you.
And that, and you know, and I should just clarify, that is one little piece of the funding that Rocky gets. You know, obviously, the amount of funding we get for this grant is right around two hundred and forty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. But our total budget is around eleven million in any given year. So there's a lot of other funding sources that we have that are federal, some state, local donations. We also have some program service fees that we collect for some of our programs. This is such a drop in the bucket compared to our total amount of funding, but it's the one that makes us a community action agency slash HRDC, Human Development Resource Council. And it's the one that carries the most compliance for us as an organization overall.
Okay, thank you. That was very helpful.
Sure.
Yeah, very helpful. And before I turn it over to Commissioner Rolfe, just how, I mean, you're here before us, and a part of it is a requirement to do so, but just how counties are involved, and why you're here, and how, I mean, we're kind of hooked at the hip, and you know, the county funding and that kind of stuff. Some may not understand how that all works.
So community action is, as it was born, so to speak, I think about sixty years ago, actually, was meant to encompass community needs. And so the laws at the federal level that guide us in the work we do require that we have connections with our local governments, and, you know, specifically our counties. And that's why the service areas are developed based on county, the regional area. And they want us to have communication with our counties so that you can see what we're doing, and that you can sign off, they call them county sign-offs, but, you know, approve that this is what our programs do, and that you're aware of them, and that you support them. And, you know, obviously, if you feel that there's needs that aren't being met that we could help with, you reach out to us, which you definitely have over the years. And we also appreciate very much the support that we've received from Lewis and Clark County in terms of the county mill.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Rolfe, question?
Yes, if I might, I'm just kind of comparing your work plan from this year to last year, and I see quite a drop in numbers in the Head Start program, going from like two hundred and eight down to a hundred and seventy-six. Can you, what's happened there?
What's happened in the Head Start program, and this is a national phenomenon that's going on currently, is, and it basically started before the pandemic, but it really escalated during those couple of years when we were in the pandemic hot period, I guess, is that we have not been able to retain staff. Staffing has been a real problem, and like I said, it's nationwide. It's not just here in Montana. But, so programs weren't able to stay open fully and have as many students as they were funded for even, because we couldn't keep classrooms open because we didn't have enough staff to have those kids. And so what Head Start's doing at the national level is they've worked with programs all over the country. In fact, Rocky is currently in what's called a, it's an under-enrollment correction. I can't remember the exact term, so basically, they've, they're working with programs to give them a year to come up with a plan as to how they're going to get fully staffed. And one part of all of that, that Rocky has actually taken advantage of, is they've encouraged programs to reduce the number of slots that they're funded for, because they want programs to be, you know, if you're funded for two hundred students, they want you to have two hundred students. So we've actually just recently gone through a reduction and were approved to go down by fifty-one slots. So I believe we're going to be at one twenty-five in this next current grant period that we're in. And the other thing that Head Start is mandating over the next seven years is that we raise wages for teachers and teacher assistants to try to be competitive with the school districts, which a lot of them are running, are beginning to run preschools around the country. And so that's, you know, who we're competing with in terms of getting staff. And the work is hard. The Head Start program has a lot of regulations and requirements, and, you know, including that you wrap services around the entire family. And there's a lot of need, and sometimes a lot of challenging family situations that these children are in. And so some of that plays out in the classroom, and it's a tough job, teaching and being a teacher's assistant in the classroom for Head Start, which makes it, again, hard to retain staff, especially if you're not paying a competitive wage.
So, excuse me if I might follow up with that. So it's really, it's a loss of people that are qualified to do the teaching in the Head Start program that's the cause of this, but the need is still there?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for asking. That's a great question.
It's one of the bigger heartbreaking challenges that has been ongoing for Rocky for the last couple of years. And, I mean, you have to have the certain ratios, and if you don't, you can't have classroom open, essentially. And so really making sure that there is qualified staff to cover the slots. And the funding is less of an issue than the people.
If I may, we're finding that in a lot of areas of government, not having enough staff to fully fund some of our positions, so I can understand that. That Head Start program, though, is really important for kids that maybe need that extra learning how to get along with each other, and maybe kids that have some kind of a disability that would make it hard for them to get started as easily. And it's been a great program. And I'm sorry to see you having to drop your numbers because of the staff needs.
Yeah, you're very right.
We've been awfully tough on young people, and we're finding out now that the whole COVID thing virtually affected no one under twenty-five, except for we shut the schools down, and we shut these kind of programs down that are needed. So we may be overreacted and caused more problems.
Absolutely. Lots of delays, and both social and intellectual delays for students, like you said, all the way from preschool through high school.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Great. Wonderful.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate it.
You might have a couple other questions. I don't know if there's any public comment on this report.
I'd like to, if I just might add one more thing. I can't think of your facility up there without thinking of my wife's grandmother. Mrs. Fisher was a delightful lady. She walked from down near the old Chodea up to Rocky when she was eighty years old to go help feed the old people, she'd say. We'd come over to visit her from where we were at the time in Bozeman, and we always had to work around her going up and feeding the old people and helping feed the old people at your facility. And thank you for what you do.
You're very welcome. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Again, any public comment on this report? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, Commissioners, we would need a motion just to approve or accept the work plan for Rocky Mountain Development Council.
Mr. Chair, I would move to accept the work plan from Rocky Mountain Development Council for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, as explained by Ms. Lattice.
Moved and seconded to approve the work plan for work year twenty-four, twenty-five. Further discussion, Commissioners? I would just say, I think it's been kind of sad, but so appreciate Rocky. This brief presentation is really a drop in the bucket for the impact they have in our community, the services that are provided, and the folks that really benefit from all that Rocky does. And they do it, being on the board, I understand how they do it with some of the most amazing people, but they also do it at the greatest value possible. I mean, they sometimes just pull in strings that, it's amazing how they get things done with the resources they have. And so I'm just really proud to be part of the organization from my board role and to watch you work in our community. So very grateful for the services you provide and the work you do, and happy to support this work plan. Commissioners, anything else? All in favor of the, oh, please. Oh, I'm sorry. We have a public comment. You'd have to come up to the microphone and introduce yourself for the record, please. And we're past public comment, but we're going to allow it today. We're ready to vote here.
I'm sorry. My name's Steve Ryerson. We live in Helena.
Welcome.
And I'm here for an unrelated issue, but I didn't know everything about Rocky. I mean, you hear about it, and, but where is the billboard coming into town? Where is the video? I have a young son that shoots commercials for scripts. I mean, where is that? Because I learned a lot. I mean, that umbrella is huge. So, I mean, where is that? Where is that in the funding? I mean, because to get public awareness so that, you know, Head Start does take off more. And if you're losing teachers to, obviously, the education system, but, you know, all of a sudden, that same teacher, which is in the classroom, and my mom was a career teacher, can go work for a preschool and pull the same, you know, get the same money or the benefits, it's like, what a calling. But how do you promote that to get that, you know, like, to market it, if you will? Because it is for the funding or for, so parents stay involved, or parents know the options out there. So I guess I'd love to see that coming into town. There's a lot of other billboards, and sometimes you scratch your head and like, that makes no sense. But that, that's amazing. So.
It is. Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Any other public comment? And we're a little out of order, but we're going to do it today. So if you'd like to comment about, we do have, there is some marketing that happens and some promotional things that happen for Rocky. There may be some opportunity there. And I just received the latest.
Impact Report?
Impact Report, and it was amazing. So if you're on their list, you'll get an impact report, and you get to see all the things they're doing in our community. But go ahead.
Well, I'm going to take just one second. Rocky does need to be more visible in the community, without a doubt. Head Start, I think, because of their recruitment, has done a good job. You'll see Head Start, they've got a really cool flyer, and it's everywhere. It's not on a billboard, unfortunately, but it's all over town and in some media spots on TV and radio. Federal money doesn't allow us to do what is called advertising, so anything that we do, like a billboard, it has to be free, which is hard to do. Or sometimes we can call it recruitment or something like that and put some information out. But we don't have a lot of unrestricted money to draw people to our programs. But Head Start especially has really tried to reach out because of the lack of teachers that we've had. But I do like the billboard idea, and I did write it down, so we'll see if we can figure that out, because that would be a great thing as you come into Helena.
One last question. If someone wanted to find out more about Rocky or get on your mailing list, how would they do that?
You can go to our website, which is just www.rmdc.net, and there are places there to get on our mailing list. It's got all of the program directors' names, phone numbers, and email addresses to get ahold if there's a specific program you'd like. Or you can always call us, and that would be on the website, too.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Appreciate it. So one last call for public comment. One last call for public comment. All right, we're closing public comment on this issue. Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Does it still stand? Both are okay with your motion second? Okay, fantastic. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much. Appreciate the comments and answers. Appreciate you being here today. All right, next item on the agenda is the inter-local agreement and Noxious Weed Management Plan between Lewis and Clark County Noxious Weed Board and the City of Helena. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Before you this morning is the inter-local agreement between the City of Helena and Lewis and Clark County Noxious Weed Board. The purpose of this agreement is to have a mutual goal between the City of Helena and Lewis and Clark County Noxious Weed District to cooperate on an integrated approach for noxious weed management. This allows all divisions of the City of Helena to work together with the Lewis and Clark County Noxious Weed District to accomplish that goal of noxious weed management. Control of nuisance weeds within the municipality remains the responsibility of the governing body of the municipality as specified in seven dash twenty-two dash four one zero one of the MCA. City of Helena may request assistance for addressing complaints, education, outreach, and noxious weed management activities. This agreement will be effective upon execution by both parties as of the date of the last signature. No modifications to this agreement will be effective unless executed in writing by the authorized representatives of the city and the district. Again, the purpose of this agreement is to effectuate the requirements to establish a written agreement and cooperatively plan for the management of noxious weeds within the boundaries of the City of Helena. Staff recommends approval of the inter-local agreement with the City of Helena and authorize the chairman to sign.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners? Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Kristin. Good morning. I, I'm very pleased to see that there is somebody looking at the weeds in the City of Helena. As I walk over to my Kiwanis meeting, which is in a hotel over there, there are noxious weeds in the Boulevard on this main street, and we are talking spotted knappweed and leafy, this is terrible stuff, and it's on the city right of way. And I would like to file a complaint. How would I go about doing that?
I think you just did, Commissioner.
Chairman, Commissioner Payne, yes.
Just so you know, I'm on this Noxious Weed Board, so Kristin and I have talked to each other before. Go ahead, Kristin.
Again, good morning. To answer that, this will help us work with them. So like, when we do get a complaint for the city, I sort of, that sort of initiates the thing, the initial contact between me and the city, and work with that division, whether it's roads, sewer, stormwater, you know, there's lots of divisions within the city, where they, you know, they go out and have contracts to do a lot of work with contractors on all their stuff, but not necessarily have the money to do some of these other things, too, or hasn't been. But they do, just like everybody, have a little bit of leeway within budget. So this helps us work with them to comply with their, with the noxious weed law, because they are required, just like we are and everybody here that owns a piece of property, to mitigate the weeds, noxious weeds, on their property. So, but yes, if you wanted to launch a complaint, you would call my office and tell me the location of that, and we would go, excuse me, do a site visit and make sure they are noxious, not nuisance, and then contact the correct, no, the correct division coordinator there.
You and I could go for a walk right when you get done, because it's right up here. Okay. The other question I had, I had a constituent call the other day, and there is, oh, that's not city. North of Bob's Valley Market and Lincoln Road, there is a bunch of new commercial construction, and the weeds. and the weeds are about waist-high. Is there any requirement in a, when they're building a new commercial facility to control the weeds?
Not nuisance vegetation, but noxious weeds. We can go in there and do stuff, but I, there's not a whole lot of.
Okay. I just need an answer.
Yep, with nuisance vegetation, unfortunately. But a lot of times, if something like that comes in, we do reach out to that developer or that landowner and talk to them, you know, to maybe help them out a little bit in.
Communicate.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Commissioner. And I will advocate for her. I don't think she needs to call your office. I think she pretty much made the complaint.
Yeah.
You're, you're good, I think. Anything else? So just for education purposes, you mentioned the law and, and the reason that noxious weeds are, we're required to address them, whether a private landowner or a city or a county or whatever, it's a state law, right?
Chairman, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. So if, and it's a complaint-driven system, so you're not out driving around looking for noxious weeds, though you might see some and do something about it if you're out and about. But it's typically a complaint-driven system, so someone driving by or seeing a patch like Commissioner Payne just saw, or.
Particularly someone who recognizes spotted knappweed when they see it.
Yes, an old rancher.
That's right.
Or a young rancher, I guess. Or if you see that in your neighbor's yard or whatever, first work with them, but then ultimately, a complaint is what engages your, your department.
Mr. Chair, yes, that's usually how we receive our complaints, is written or, you know, they come in and do that. So it's a complaint-driven system, yeah.
And just knowing you and knowing how it works, it's a, we try to work with people first, so we don't come down on people, hey, you're breaking the law. It's, hey, notice these noxious weeds. You may not understand what you have here, but we can help you or guide you or give you advice or whatever it might be. So you typically try to help people address their issues before you take more punitive action. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, yeah, that's usually what we do. I always, me and Alex Lopez, my weed planner, we always encourage neighbors to be neighborly and work on communication and talking. A lot of people just don't understand what the pretty purple flower is in their yard and the bees like it. So, you know, but trying to work with them and educate, you know, it ends up being one of our largest education venues that we have. I know it's not necessarily, when it comes to legal action, sometimes it's not fun in that regard, but it ends up being a really good education. We already have over 70 complaints this year that we've went to and have inspected and worked with a lot of landowners, and we get really good compliance and education out there and help people, teach them to mitigate their noxious weed.
The great majority work with you and, and try to address their issues. So it's a very small number that we have to pursue more aggressively. But anyway, anything else, Commissioners? This one. How about a public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Okay. Hearing no public comment. Commissioners, how about a motion?
Chairman, I move that we approve the interlocal agreement and noxious weed management plan between Lewis and Clark County Noxious Weed Board and the City of Helena as presented by Christian Leonard.
Second.
Move and second to approve the interlocal agreement as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? Appreciate it. Christian, appreciate the work you do and carry on here. All right, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Cohero RMS. I think I said it right. Did I say it right?
You nailed it.
Okay, great. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Wright, K-E-V-I-N-W-R-I-G-H-T. I'm the special operations captain for the Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, before you have for your consideration, the contract with Cohero for a coroner case management system in the amount of $11,778, which will be an annual fee. Currently, the coroner's division uses Cohero, their software service, but it is housed on a server maintained by the county, by the county IT, not by me, because it would already be broken if that was the case. The server is close or is at capacity, so we would have to either purchase a new server and then have county employees maintain that server here locally, or the purpose of this new consideration and contract is to move it from that server to a cloud-based service, which is provided by Cohero. This is the most cost-efficient manner. It allows for the latest technology, which is the trend of a lot of technology now going to that cloud-based server. Their software and everything has passed the security checks by RIT, so it's already kind of, it's been reviewed by them. There's been a lot of conversations, a lot of meetings being had to make sure that this is a valid service provided to the county for them. And that is the end of my presentation. I know you will have lots of questions, so.
We may. Commissioners?
Yes, if I might.
Commissioner Raw.
This is part of the budgeted, the regular budget, I assume.
In my notes, I had that written, and I failed to mention that, yes, this is already built into the budget for this year. It was anticipated that we were going to be looking to go to this and made sure that it was already written in there, so it's in there.
Thank you. Mr. Payne.
Could you, are there any, what is the downside, or is there a downside of moving this to a cloud-based service?
As for a downside, we did not really identify anything for a negative in there. We were speaking with them, we would own the, the data, so if we were to go to another company, the conversion would be there and be available for that. It had passed through the legal review as well, so the attorneys looked at that to make sure that it was covered, that it was a valid contract, that all of the county and the constituents, their needs would be met and covered that way. The benefit is that, like I had mentioned, that we don't have to house it currently, where it's not something that if it breaks, we have to pay to have it fixed. When you go to a cloud-based system, if something were to go wrong, it's on that company, which is Cohero, it's on them to fix it and maintain it and make sure that it's working. So that is certainly a benefit there. So getting hold of them, and we've had a relationship with them and been in business with them since, I believe, around 2016. So they've definitely been a vetted company, that we know how they operate, and now we're just going to that latest technology.
Is there any chance that bad people could hack this system or destroy some of the information? For example, it's used as evidence in a criminal case. Could some of that be taken away and not available for us anymore?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, obviously, that's always a concern, and that is why we had RIT look at it, and they're the experts, which I am not, in that world, to make sure that, yeah, they have all of the correct steps in place to make sure. Could it happen? Absolutely. But that could happen to the best software service out there, and we've seen that happen. But it's kind of a risk that we have to take when you're using technology and all of those manners. But that's certainly why we are blessed here in the county, where we have so many different partners to reach out to and make sure that we are doing the right thing, because I am not the expert in that. But luckily, lucky for us, we have those experts, where we can talk with them and make sure that everything is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, Commissioner? All right. So just down to the brass tacks, it's a better service, better technology. It, capacity has grown and it's a better value for the taxpayer.
Yep.
Okay, those are all pluses to me. And yeah, no matter if it's housed with us or in the cloud, there's always the risk of, the cybersecurity risk. But I think, you know, we'll, we'll make sure that we're using the best technology we can to protect that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
How about, well, you know what? I have another question. Since we have you here, I, you know, it's, it's, it's so close, but maybe you can call on some of your, some of your cohorts here. It's a, it's a division of the sheriff's office that isn't all often talked about and all the, the good work that's being done there. Of course, it's, some of it's very tragic work and all of that, having to deal with. But just, I think, an overall explanation of what the coroner's division does and, and how, what data are we collecting and why and all of that? I mean, I think it's important to public, it's an opportunity to educate the public on what you guys really do. So it's a chance to blow your horn, no hard questions.
Oh, yeah. The, the main purpose of the coroner's division is to determine cause and manner of any death that happened within the county. One of the main jobs they also have is the notification of a death to the next of kin. And of course, all of the data and information regarding deaths, that's all important. But when it comes down to is those survivors and being able to compassionately relate to them that there was a death of their loved one and that they, we load them with as much information as we can and as compassionately as we can, so that they can understand what are the steps necessary in a death. Because unfortunately for us, we have to communicate with them on their worst day, when they do learn that a loved one has passed, and it's up to us to do that in the best manner possible, so that they can go on with that. For the data that you had talked about, it's any deaths and then how the cause and manner, how those deaths happened within the county. We have old books going back about to 1800s, about to 1889 for deaths in the county. Those are, they're not comical, but it's different when you read what the coroner wrote on a cause of death, when they put like, Jim Bob fell off ladder and done hit his head. We use a little bit more technical terms than that now. But, and we have a better way than just a big ledger to document that, and that's where Cohero comes in, so.
Great. And then we report these deaths to the state, and there's death certificates that are generated from all this information and all of that, correct?
Yep. And they're a big part of filling out those death certificates and reporting it to the medical examiner's office and for statistics for the state as well.
And there, I mean, there's, in some cases, there's a lot that rides on it, whether it's insurance or a criminal case or whatever it might be for families, that whatever that death certificate says, they rely on that for whatever might need to happen for the, the estate, for example, or other things.
Absolutely. And that's where the, the coroner and those deputy coroners that we have in that division, they are, I mean, their professionalism comes out, because they're death investigators. A lot of times, they're looked at maybe just body removal, which is not the case. I mean, they are truly death investigators and of the utmost professionals.
Right. Great. Well, thank you very much. Really appreciate the explanation.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, Commissioners, we were talking about this contract with Cohero, and any further questions? How about public comment on this item? Public comment on this contract? Any public comment? All right. Hearing none, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Cohero RMS as explained by Captain Wright.
Second.
Move and second to approve the contract as presented. Further discussion? I'm glad you're all here. I just want to thank all of you and, and the rest of the coroners or deputy coroners that are out there. I know there's a whole bunch, but thank you for the good work you do and, and the difficult work that you do for the citizens of Lewis and Clark County. Appreciate it. Thanks for the overview today. All right. With that, Commissioners, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is a grant amendment from the Montana Department of Commerce. Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Ann McCauley, Director of Grants and Purchasing. Before you today is a grant contract amendment from the Montana Department of Commerce's Community Development Block Grant Economic Development Program. So this is our CDBG grant that we have with Florence Crittenan to do the renovation at their Cooney property. This was a $525,000 award, with the majority of those funds going to the construction line item. So if you can kind of think of how a budget might be laid out, there's administrative, engineering, architectural services, construction and contingency. It's kind of the basic budget in this case. This is a no-cost budget amendment, meaning there's no change to the overall award amount. It's going to stay at that 525,000, and there's also no change to the match amount. What it is, is just simply reallocating funds from that construction line item up into architectural services. And the reason for that change was through the required federal environmental review, and that has a historical preservation component with it. It was determined that they'd had to do an enclosed fire escape from the third floor, which is the area being renovated under this project, rather than a steel unenclosed entry-exit. So that added considerably more architectural cost to design that enclosed stairway rather than what they had first proposed. And so that is the reason for this ask, is to move $27,393 from construction to architectural services.
Thank you.
Happy to take any questions.
No questions.
So this is a, a grant and a project that we've been working on for a number of years, actually. And maybe just a super quick overview for those that might say, what are they talking about?
Yes, happy to. So this specific grant, it actually just came on board in April of 2024, but you're absolutely right, Mr. Chair, that we have been working with Florence Crittenan since, going back to 2122, to help them get that Cooney property that they acquired in March of '22 up to the level of all the services that they want to do with it. So you recall that they had three campuses that they were doing services across, and through the acquisition and renovation of the Cooney property, they're able to put all their services under one roof. And they've been very strategic and prepared in how they've been able to do that, both acquisition as well as renovation. The county's been involved with each piece of it. We had CDBG coronavirus funds, that was part of the acquisition piece. We also had some of our own direct American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds that helped with that. Yeah, so we've been engaged with Florence Crittenan on this project for over two and a half years now.
Great. And then this is the CDBG grant portion of that, which, just a line item reallocation.
That's all this is, yes. Most federal awards allow for up to 10% of your total award amount to be reallocated between line items. For the CDBG program, it's a much lower threshold for that, it's $5,000. And so that's what triggered this formal amendment in this case.
Right. And for those who don't know, CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant.
Thank you.
Program, so. Okay, Commissioners, any questions?
I just love it when they recognize that sometimes not all of us understand what all those fancy letters mean. So thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Ann. Really appreciate it. And how about public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Okay. Hearing none. Commissioners, zero motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the grant contract amendment from the Montana Department of Commerce as explained by Ann McCauley.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Move and second to approve the grant contract amendment as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes, please.
I, I just want to once, once again, recognize Florence Crittenan organization for the wonderful work they're doing. We made a conscious decision not to create new programs with the money that came through during COVID from the feds, and we decided to use it for one-time items. This is what, this represents some significant money that helped them, this nonprofit organization, purchase a better facility for them and for our community. They have a wonderful program that carries people through, basically, from being homeless to being returned to the society as productive members of, of society. They, they work with people for sometimes two and three years to, to get, get them in a better place, to give them the, the support they need and encouragement they need to, to, to make a difference. And this decision that we made not to create new programs, but to make one-time purchases for, like, for assistance for them to, to buy that, the property. purchases, uh, for, like, for assistance for them to, to buy that, the property, uh, that doesn't create, um, an ongoing program that we have to go back to the taxpayers and ask for funding, I think was a good one, and I think it's proven out and is really paying dividends by having us operated by the Florence Crittinen, uh, organization. And do it, they're doing a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comment? All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Thank you, Anne. All right, next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-89 to levy and assess the tax upon benefited property within the Cattle Baron Estates Rural Improvement District Number 2022-09. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Phil Gonzalez is here with Community Development and Planning. Before you, I'm presenting, as you mentioned, the per resolution 2024-89 is a resolution to levy and assess the Cattle Baron Estates Road Rural Improvement District Number 2022-09. The proposed RID for the Cattle Baron Estates subdivision is located north of Sierra Road, west of North Montana, shown on the vicinity map. Cattle Baron Estates subdivision is a five-lot subdivision comprising a total of 128 acres. The RID district was created by this Board of Commissioners on June 23rd of 2022, at the time of final plot of that subdivision. That resolution was 2022-85, as per the subdivision regulations. The RID seeks in an assessment for the maintenance of internal subdivision roads, including snow removal, sanding, grading of all common areas. Property owners within the RID boundary were notified at the public hearing to levy and assess those benefiting properties for the maintenance of those internal roads. That public notice was included letters to the property owners and posting in the Helena IR classifieds. Uh, this board approves this resolution 2024-89. It will create an annual assessment of $231 per property, as been determined by public, by Lewis and Clark Public Works Department to meet the annual needs of the RID, totaling $1,155. And, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, at the time the staff report was written, uh, no public comment was received on this resolution, though yesterday afternoon, staff received a public comment, which I will share with you now.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'll give you a moment to look through that, uh, item from, uh, property owner Ryan Vowell, Robinette. They are equal all lot owners of this subdivision, so all five lots are currently owned by them. And I will attempt to summarize, uh, this piece of public comment for the, the record on our behalf, the property owner is here and can speak to their public comment as well. And having spoken with the, uh, the property owners, uh, they've stated and communicated to staff that, in fact, they own all lots, as mentioned. Currently, none of the lots are sold or plan to be sold, uh, have not been developed in any manner. They went through the subdivision a few years ago in order to diversify some of their business interests on the different lots, as they state within this piece of public comment. And, uh, in fact, seek not to go forward with the levy and assess, but instead seek to manage and maintain those road improvements on their own. With that information, that summarizes my presentation. I'm available for questions, if this board commission has any, and as mentioned, the, I believe the property owner is here to answer any questions you may have as well. Thank you.
Great, may, maybe a couple of questions here, I, I have a couple. So, um, they're, uh, currently owner of all lots and this, the family's owner of all lots or the trust and, um, uh, maintaining those improvements currently. So from their perspective, and we'll, we'll hear from, from them potentially here, but, in looking at this letter quickly, there's, it's unnecessary to have the assessment placed upon them because they're already owner of all lots, taking care of the infrastructure, and it's unnecessary to go through a county process. So from that perspective, um, it, there's potential that in the future someday that, that those lots could be sold, right? I mean, that potential's there. And if they were sold to someone outside of the family, then there would be some other or new responsibility for maintaining the infrastructure that's there. So I'm just thinking about options that we potentially have here. One would be to, uh, leave the RID in place but assess zero, because right now it's being taken care of by the landowner that owns all the lots. But someday that RID may be needed. That's one option. Another option is there is a process for dissolving an RID, correct? So that's an option as well. Or going forward with what's on the books, I guess, but that money would come in from the landowner right now and go back out to them to do the work, or it's somebody to do the work, contractor to do the work, which they're saying, at least from what I'm understanding, it's unnecessary at this time. So I guess we have those, those options on the table, and the other thing I'd ask is there's not a requirement to make a decision today. We could discuss all the options, listen to public comment, and make a decision next week if we needed to, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that is correct. This time of year, staff attempts to get all their RIDs done before September 1st in order to make that cutoff for, um, the levy and assess.
So we have a couple more meetings to make that decision if we, if we didn't decide today or wanted to consider whatever, um, this, this information plus other, um, comment. Okay, so, uh, that, that would be the only thing I'm thinking about is, um, you know, if those lots were ever sold to someone else other than family members or public, that then there, you know, may be a need for an RID and we'd have to recreate it. So we could potentially leave the RID on the books and assess zero until someday in the future, and look at it annually to see where we are, whether, and keep it the same or if something changes, we could then take action. That's one option, right?
Mr. Chair, correct.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Phil at this moment, before we take public comment?
I just soon wait for public comment.
Okay, great, there may be questions for you in a second, or in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Public comment on this item? Anne, just come to the microphone, and if you'd give us your name and address for the record, that would be grand, and then you have the floor. I'm assuming this, the letter's from you.
Yes, it is. My name is Valerie Robinett. It's spelled R-O-B-I-N-E-T-T. My husband and I own, uh, this subdivision. The property is owned by Veron Land and Estates, um, and we also own Hard Rock Road Building and Utilities, which is a contractor of the city of Helena. So, uh, the property was divided basically to separate, if you want to say, church and state, we needed to separate our home from our businesses. And so the lots, there is no intention to sell the lots. If there ever were to be a home on the lots, it would be something we built and possibly rented or something like that, but we wanted to preserve the hayfield and not affect that, that's why there's two weird-sized lots on the side. And so, um, the RID, I guess, i- it's a formality of the subdivision, the creation of the subdivision, we understand the purpose fully, but at this time, it doesn't make sense that the county would want to take on this burden of maintaining these two small roads, uh, when we, of course, do it ourselves, weed management, we plow the snow, and it is, is our business and our vehicles that cause the impact to the roads in the system. So what we would propose is either, as you'd stated, table the discussion for a moment to come up with some remedies, um, or restrictive deed to where if the property is sold, that then an RID is put into full effect, um, or you could do, like you said, zero. But at this time, there's, it doesn't seem like it's for the county, for the special circumstance makes sense to put in place. But we understand for future, it needs to be there, um, you know, something could happen to both of us and the lots would need to be sold, and so we understand having it in place, but not at this time.
Thank you very much for your comment, appreciate it. Phil, a couple of questions came up for me anyway, I don't know, questions from the others at this time?
I think, I think I kind of understand, and I'd like to hear if, if there's a remedy that, that staff would re, would recommend.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, uh, we have, um, spoken, I believe, with Public Works, um, and, um, and with our Community Development Planning Director, Greg McNally, might be able to chime in too if he has a, a different opinion, but, uh, we have discussed, um, the possibility of, um, dissolving the RID. As you'll remember, it was a condition of approval for the subdivision. Within the subdivision, the prop, future property owners waived their right, uh, up to a certain period, I believe, um, to create an RID, so an RID could always be created in the future. But, uh, whether or not that, to dissolve it now or just to assess zero, um, you know, I think staff is equally capable of, to implement, um, and I'll leave it up to this commission to decide.
Commissioner, are you done?
Go ahead.
Phil, um, our, um, the, the speaker, uh, the public comment came in and she mentioned a rest, having restrictive deeds. And so she also mentioned that, you know, she and her husband could die. Might I also point out that they could get a divorce? They could, um, have a stroke and have to be on public, I mean, there's all kinds of things that we hope doesn't happen, but this isn't left to us. Would the restrictive deed idea, and I assume that would mean a restrictive deed on any, on the sale of any of the lots, um, so that the new purchase, do you have any idea how this is going to work, or is it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, um, I, I don't have a, an exact plan of how that would be implemented or the county would monitor if like, uh, if the property were to transfer and that, um, deed restriction would go into effect. I would have to look into that issue, but, um, so that might be all that I'd be able to answer on that at this moment.
Okay, thank you.
Another thought that came up as, um, we were, as the discussion was happening here, is that it is possible as well to, um, assess zero this year and spend the entire next year, because annually we look at all of our RIDs. Next year, it's spend the next year studying the options, whether we want to dissolve it, whether, you know, whatever, all the ideas that came up, we could not have to, be under pressure of the end of the month to make a decision on this. We could, uh, assess zero for the next year, the RID stays in place as it is now, uh, and spend the next year determining what the best path forward is, which would be, um, my preference at this time, but we can, uh, discuss that.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I, I, I would, I, I could live with the, that idea, um, or to, to, uh, pass, uh, pass, uh, a delay, you know, prove it, pass a delay on any, any implement, may, implementation of the tax to pay for any work that isn't necessary to be done at this point. But I think maybe your suggestion is, is, uh, is reasonable to go ahead and do it and put a zero assessment on it with, uh, the idea that we would, um, and maybe put it right in the motion that we'll analyze it every, every year and then make a decision at that time.
I think we're required to analyze them every year anyway, so that, and we could surely, uh, offer to work with the landowner to, uh, determine the best path forward and whether it's dissolution or some other remedy.
I have a question for Ms. Robinett.
Please, if you're willing to answer a question.
So, um, would a, an assessment of zero for this year giving us time to figure out the best way to do this? And I'm, I'm sure our, our county attorneys would want to be looking at language for deed restriction or the best way to do this. Would a one-year hiatus do what you think needs to be done?
Uh, my opinion of, is that once an RID is placed on the property, it, yes, they can be dissolved, but it would be a difficult process and possibly cost us further attorney bills or something like that. I guess what I'd like to see is that we just table it for a moment, and if we had a couple weeks, that I could actually get legal counsel to see if a restrictive deed is appropriate and how that would work, and you guys could get informed also on this. It's, I realize it's a special situation and I could not find rules, laws, or anything that was even close to coming up with this situation. It, in creating the subdivision, it would have been nice to have been able to have conversations about these, some of these varied points for this reason, just because it does cause, you know, a problem for what our intentions are and of course, of what you guys would like to see in place for future. So, um, I guess I would feel like tabling it would be the most effective for a week or two until we could actually visit, because I've only had two weeks' notice that this was going to be put in place, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That makes some sense.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
I just, yeah, just a thought, that, that makes some sense too, that, that everybody go back and take a look at it and maybe set it up, uh, to be reviewed in two weeks, would see if they can ever bring, come up with a better solution.
What is the deadline to have these RIDs?
The end of the month.
The end of August or the end of September?
Yes, end of August, end of August.
All right.
So the 29th is our last opportunity to, um, it looks like, 27th? Or the 29th?
20, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, 27th of August will be fine.
Okay, 27th of August.
On Tuesday.
All right, prior to any action, is there any further public comment? Any further public comment? Any further public comment? All right, Commissioners, so I guess we're considering, um, tabling this item until the 27th of August at our regular scheduled meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to table this item until our regular scheduled meeting on the 27th of August, which is 9:00 AM in this room. Commissioners, further discussion? Thanks, we'll look at the options and hopefully be able to make a decision then. We do always have, uh, beyond that, like I said, you know, if we assess zero, nothing happens in terms of your tax bill and we can spend the next year working on solutions as well, which removes any significant pressure there, so. All right, 27th, we'll take it up again. Commissioners, all in favor of the motion?
27th or the 29th?
27th.
27th, okay.
Commissioners, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here today. Okay, the next item on the agenda is zoning variance request for 2800 Park Drive. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Rachel Ward with Community Development and Planning. Before you was a request, Zone 2024-009, um, for a variance to the 100-foot lot width requirement in Special Zoning District Number Nine, the Upper West Side. The applicant and property owners are Annette and Stephen Ryerson. They're both here today. I know you've heard this presentation before, last week at the Planning and Zoning Commission, you guys are, uh, part of that Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, but for the record, I'm just going to go over some of these key, uh, facts. So the subject property consists of two lots, uh, Lot 1 and Lot 5A of Block 3 of Highland Park Subdivision. Uh, property is currently addressed as 2800 Park Drive. Lot 1 is .58 acres and is currently undeveloped. Lot 5A is .83 acres, it's got a house, a shed, um, and a detached garage slash shop. The property is surrounded on all sides by residential uses and is approximately 250 feet from city limits of Helena. As I mentioned, the property is in Special Zoning District Number Nine, which requires that all lots have a lot width of at least 100 feet. So Annette and Stephen Ryerson are requesting this variance to the 100-foot minimum lot width requirement, uh, for the purpose of, uh, completing a boundary line adjustment to accommodate a buildable area on Lot 1. a buildable area on Lot 1. The applicants own both lots. They purchased Lot 1 in 2015 and Lot 5A in 2016. A site evaluation was done in 1995, which identified shallow bedrock approximately three to six inches below ground. And that, along with rolling topography, indicated that it was impractical to put in a septic system on that Lot 1. A boundary line adjustment would provide a buildable area along Flowery Street, which would allow the Ryersons an opportunity to build on this other lot. So this is a, the draft boundary line adjustment, which the applicants would like to file. You can see the old boundary line here. The new boundary line would accommodate a buildable area along Flowery, next to where the shop is being shown. Before the boundary line adjustment can be recorded, they will have a DEQ COSA rewrite, which is they're working on right now. This is a lot layout showing how water, wastewater, and stormwater would be accommodated on both of those lots. So as part of the review process, a summary of the variance request was submitted to various public agencies noted in the staff report requesting comments. We received five agency comments, including one from the Public Works Department of Lewis and Clark County, the Address Coordinator, Flood Plane Manager, the City of Helena, Community Development and Planning, as well as the Helena Assistant Fire Chief on behalf of the West Side Fire Service Area. No, excuse me, no significant concerns were noted from these agencies. However, the City of Helena, Community Development and Planning noted that the area has been pre-zoned, city R2, but that they have no current plans to annex the subject property or provide extension of services. They did note that the variance would be in line with the city's R2 bulk and dimensional requirements. Public notice for the two public hearings, the first at the Planning and Zoning Commission and here today, were provided through a notice mailed to adjacent landowners on July 8th. A legal notice was published in the Helena Independent Record on July 20th and 27th, and a sign was posted onsite on July 23rd. To date, there have been no public comments received. So the regulations of Special Zoning District Number Nine allow for variances to be granted where, one, literal enforcement of the zoning regulations would result in an unnecessary hardship, so long as, two, the variance is not contrary to the public interest or detrimental to neighboring properties. The staff report that you received outlines findings related to these two criteria, but to summarize, with regard to that first criteria resulting in an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, they note that constraints to develop Lot 1 include shallow bedrock and steep topography, as well as the existing lot dimensions make it practically impossible to create two lots with 100-foot lot width that can accommodate onsite wastewater treatment systems. And without the boundary line adjustment, the applicant would not be able to develop on Lot 1. With regard to the second criteria, that the variance is not contrary to public interest or detrimental to neighboring properties, the application notes that the purpose of the variance is to accommodate a boundary line adjustment that would allow them to develop single-family dwelling on both lots, which is a permitted use within Special Zoning District Nine. The City of Helena, Community Development and Planning also indicated that the proposed variance is not contrary to the R2 zoning, that the property was pre-zoned. And finally, I'll note that there have been no public comments that have been received regarding the variance request.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Questions, Commissioners? Just one, the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think you already mentioned this, but they unanimously recommended approval of this variance, correct?
Mr. Chair, that is correct, so.
And you have some pictures here.
I do have some photos. I've got a few, a few more slides, either just some photos of the property, the top two are Lot 1 as it exists right now. You can see a flat shelf. It is rocky. And then the steep topography. The bottom two photos are of Lot 5A on Flowery. And yes, as you mentioned, this variance request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on August 7th. They voted 6-0 to forward a positive recommendation of the variance request. And yeah, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer any.
Thank you. Other questions, Commissioners, excuse me, at this time? Well, we'll offer an opportunity for the applicant. If you'd like to address the commission, you're more than welcome. Don't have to. Please, you need to come up to the microphone, introduce yourself for the record. Please, if you're going to do that, you don't have to again, but you're welcome to.
Annette Ryerson, R-Y-E-R-S-O-N.
And Stephen Ryerson, same spelling.
We just appreciate Rachel's hard work and putting all this together, and thank you for your consideration. And we're available if anybody has any questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being, thank you. Okay. Other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment on this item? Okay, Commissioners, discussion? Anything you'd like to discuss or questions you have at this point?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to make sure that the people who are watching this at home on TV understand that all three of us sit on that zoning commission. We have heard the full presentation two times, and any questions or concerns we may have had, I think, have been fully addressed. I'm over.
Thank you. Commissioner, anything else? Just for the record, I'd like to just discuss our criteria a little bit, and we have done this, you already presented and talked about that, but in order to move forward, I believe it's incumbent on us to make sure that these two criteria have been thoroughly met and discussed. So the literal enforcement of the zoning regulations will result in an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. And it's obvious through the discovery here and what you've presented that the lot that they're interested in building upon cannot be built upon because of its natural state. And so it's not a self-imposed hardship. This is a natural imposed hardship, which is something that's important to talk about. And by reconfiguring the lots, lots which are owned by the applicant, we can accommodate a buildable location for both lots or for the lot that was prior, prior, could not be built on. And then there's been opportunity for the neighbors to protest or to at least give comment. We've heard nothing. And from the other agencies that have been invited to participate, there's been no significant concerns from anyone. Even the city and their zoning says it will not, will not impede their, or it's not contrary to their R2 zoning of the property. So that's important. So the first criteria, the conclusion there, that the criteria has been met, a literal enforcement of the zoning regulations will result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant. And I think it's incumbent on us to recognize that, and this has been recognized by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and so want to make sure that's on the record. Commissioners, if you have any other thoughts about that, you're welcome to offer those. The second criteria is the variance is not contrary to public interest or detrimental to the neighboring properties. And I started to speak to that already. This 100-foot width requirement, which the variance is going to, or they're asking for a variance from that, there has been no concern from neighbors, as we said, and it does, will comply with, you know, future zoning if it's brought into the city. And it will allow for the development of that lot that prior was not able to be developed. So in conclusion, the criteria, this criteria has been met, and the variance is not contrary to public interest or detrimental to neighboring properties. Does not impact neighboring properties in terms of their ability to use their property or to build a house on their property or whatever. It would not cause them detriment from the analysis. Anything else, Commissioners, that you want to add to the, to the record in terms of this? There are no conditions applied in addition.
Mr. Chair, no conditions associated with this variance.
Right. Okay. Great. So Commissioners, any further discussion? Any further questions? With that on the record, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would move to approve the zoning variance request for 2,000, or 2800 Park Drive that has been submitted by owners Annette and Stephen Ryerson and explained by Rachel Ward.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the variance request for 2800 Park Drive as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners?
Pretty straightforward, I think, and nobody's harmed by this. It helps the Ryersons with their future plans, and government needs to get out of the way and let them, let them do what they need to do.
Thank you, Commissioner. And just for the record, the reason we go over this stuff multiple times, both in the Planning and Zoning Commission and here, we want to make sure that the record indicates that we have a strong basis for making our decisions as durable as possible, hopefully, if there were any future question about that. So it's important to make sure that we are thorough. So thank you for your good work, Rachel and Ryersons, thank you very much. We'll move forward here. Commissioners, with that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay. We will move on. The next item on the agenda is time where we will take public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the commission but not on today's agenda. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing no public comment forward, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.